All right, good evening. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for May 26, 2020. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you to everyone who made it out this evening. We have got some, on the outside, it looks like a short agenda. We've got some big things to discuss and go over tonight. So I'll, I don't have any comments. Do any members of council have comments?
A couple of things. The other day, meant to say this, but a week ago, we had our election. I'd just like to thank Penny Lindberg, our voter registrar, Jeff, in her office, the election officials, and the Board of Elections, because that was a challenging election. Things kept moving, things kept changing, and they did an amazing job in making sure the citizens of Bristol knew what was changing, knew that there's an election, and to come up with some very innovative ways to vote safe, such as the drive-through window over on Scott Street, and to make the polling places safe the day of the election. So I really appreciate all the hard work they did, and it shows in the turnout, which was up from a traditional municipal election. So congratulations on a job well done.
All right, thank you. City managers' comments?
No comments.
No comments. All right, item C is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, of the city council and city staff. I've got a couple of topics to address, so I'll try to make them quick. First, yes, I would like to very much thank the members of staff for doing an excellent job with the election. I would like to thank the candidates for putting on a fair and clean election, and I would like to congratulate those who won. And second topic, a number of people have contacted me concerning recycling abilities in the city. I know that there have been some problems with people abusing our recycling locations. Unfortunately, we are currently in a situation where recycling opportunities are only available from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on business days, which was not yesterday, even though it was a weekday. Because it was a holiday, many people had the opportunity to do cleaning around their houses, yet they did not have the opportunity to take materials to be recycled, because those facilities are currently locked up outside of normal business hours. I would like to ask the city staff to look seriously into a way of making those opportunities available again to the public, so that they're available outside of business hours, so that most people can still access them. And the third topic, which was the focus of the meeting last week, and it will be on the agenda for today, but I'm not speaking either for or against the proposed operator, rather, I want to address a topic that was brought up by one of those letters. There are at least six different perspectives on the casino. One is that of the operator, as presented in the heavily redacted agenda document. Presumably, the council was provided with an unredacted version of that document, because there are a lot of facts and figures that were not made available to the public, but nevertheless, that expresses their perspective. Another perspective is that of the state, as represented in the J-Larck report. Another perspective is that of the investment partner, which is largely local representatives, and they, their perspective was represented in the report provided to the legislature. There's also the perspective of the residents of the area. There's also the perspective of the visitors to the casino, and there's also the perspective of the city council, and the city in general, the local government. That perspective has not yet been represented in terms of dollars and statistics. I would ask that an independent study that represents the city's interests be conducted, as was recommended in one of the letters last week, because the city's perspective has not yet been represented in a report, and I'm very much concerned that the city needs its interests represented. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no one else has signed up for non-agenda items, so item D is adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion, a second.
A move, we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Farnham, and second from Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Low Power?
Yes.
Mr. Luigard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Item one is a public hearing on the city manager's fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. Go ahead and open the hearing, and before we get into it, I'll just remind anyone viewing at home or in the audience, you won't hear any comments from council members tonight. This is purely a public hearing to hear from city residents, and we'll all have comments, I'm sure, at the next meeting. So staff report.
Counsel, tonight is just a public hearing on the budget I presented back on May 12 of 2020. This is an opportunity for citizens to provide input on the budget proposal, and listen to any concerns or comments they may have in regards to my recommended budget.
Thank you. One person has signed up for a public comment, Mr. Pollard.
Well, thank you again. I did not sign up at the first slot, because I wasn't intending to be the only speaker. I'm sure that Nancy Marnie would want to advise the council to stay the course, and I would like to express that, that general idea as well. In the proposed budget, there was roughly, slightly over a 5% reduction. I'm concerned that because of the heavy toll that's been taken on our meals tax, even more on our lodging tax, and to an extent which may or may not have been satisfactorily represented, regardless of the best of intentions, also will affect our sales tax as well. I think that the 5% is a good start, and I think that additional reductions may be needed to be taken. Fortunately, as the city manager did point out, this is a, it intends the intentions of the city and not necessarily final numbers, but I would like to advise the council and staff that additional cuts may be needed, and perhaps deep cuts may be needed as the year goes forward, and I would like to recommend that those ideas be kept in mind, and perhaps that additional cuts be taken upfront. But even more than that, I would like to encourage the council to have the strength of will to hold with the cuts, because even as much as this may be, in my opinion, a good start, I'm concerned that there may be some who will take cuts personally, and some may want to concede some of those cuts back to them, and we don't have the money for that. We have already seen significant impact on the city finances, and things are probably going to get much, much worse, if only because of the 60 to 90-day delay that we have before, between collections and when it's actually received by the city. Things may get a lot worse. We can't afford to concede back to those who make valid arguments, because the city needs do have to be funded as much as absolutely possible, but this is going to be a painful year. I would like to encourage the city council to have the strength of will to stick it out, because this is not going to be an easy time for anybody. The people don't have the ability to just demand their employer give them a raise, and I've personally taken about a 5% reduction. I'm glad to have my job, because a lot of other people don't, and I think the city's going to have to basically follow that general idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead and close the hearing. Item two is a resolution confirming preferred casino operator staff report.
Counsel, tonight you have a resolution before you, which would confirm our preferred casino operator here within the city limits of Bristol. On April the 17th of 2020, I issued a request for information from potential casino operators, of operators who'd be willing to have an establishment here within the city of Bristol. On the May 8th, at 5:00 p.m., that RFI closed, we had one proposal from Hard Rock International, the United Company, and Par Ventures. Tonight, this resolution would allow me the authority to submit certain applications and certain documents to the Virginia Lottery Board in order for Hard Rock International, the United Company, and Par Ventures to be considered our preferred casino gaming operator. At that point, the Virginia Lottery Board has 45 days upon receipt to submit a letter back to the city stating that the preferred casino gaming operator is pre-qualified. At that point, I would then come back to city council seeking a resolution to authorize me to file a petition with the circuit court to have a referendum in the city of Bristol on November the 3rd of 2020, to have a casino at 500 Gate City Highway, formerly known as the Bristol Mall, and Hard Rock International would be the operator of that casino here in the city of Bristol.
All right, very good, thank you. Public comment, we didn't have anyone sign up physically, but we had one person send an email comment.
Let's try this one, okay. Nancy Marnie doesn't use email, but I did speak to her late this afternoon. She had something come up and was not able to attend. Her comment was that the devil is in the detail. She is concerned about what the casino will do to the city and not for the city. She said she's not willing to vote for something without having all the details, and that she would really prefer to see the range and the median over the mean, for the salaries for the employees at the casino.
All right, thank you. Next, we would like to hear from the casino operators, Martin and Jason.
Gentlemen, tonight we have Sean Cafrey with Hard Rock International here, along with two representatives from the United Company as well. Mr. Cafrey is going to give us a short presentation on Hard Rock, and what they do in other communities, and what they anticipate doing on here in the city of Bristol.
Great. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, and it's you and your staff, thank you guys for having us here, on behalf of Hard Rock International, and our chairman, Jim Allen, and our partners, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Stacy, and his staff at the United Company, Martin and Jason. We just want to, first of all, tell you how excited we are to not only be able to present you with the opportunity to bring a significant number of jobs, but a new venue of entertainment that we believe will help transform not only the city itself, but bring together an opportunity to bring in more tourism, jobs, and significant growth, and things for people to do here in the city. I think the, I don't know if they have the clicker handy? All right, thank you. So I'll just walk you through a few things. First of all, we wanted to start by saying, why Bristol? So Hard Rock was originally founded in 1971 by two Americans in London. They took a lease of an Aston Martin dealership right on Green Park, and wanted to create the first classless restaurant. And in doing so, they founded four core principles of the organization that still to this day are the sort of founding elements that drive our business. The first one is love all, serve all. The second is all is one. The next one is save the planet, and in addition to that, the last one is take time to be kind. And those guiding principles still to this day are the reason that we operate as a company, and they have helped drive us from being rather than a casino operator that you find, which is sort of called slots in a box, into an actual entertainment company. Back when the company was founded, there were a few key elements that they wanted to make sure came into play. The first was, they wanted the place to be fun, and they wanted it to allow for everyone to come in. They thought having live music, good food, and being able to be open to everyone was something that wasn't in existence in London, and they thought it would be something that would take off. So that's the first one in 1971. Fast forward 50 years to today, and now the company is actually in 276 locations in 76 countries, so significant growth through that time. One of the core elements, though, is this idea of entertainment, and more than anything else, we're an entertainment company first. So when we were looking at advancing legislation in Virginia, which we've been focused on for quite a few years, we looked at Bristol, once it was announced that it could be one of the potential cities, and we looked at what your heritage was. And seeing that you were the birthplace of country music was immediately a welcome sign to us. And then, once we actually got here on the ground, and traveled down State Street, and we went through all the venues that you guys have here, we saw sessions, all of a sudden, we understood that it was not only just a simple moniker of what you guys had, you know, done in the past, but it was actually woven into the fabric of the community here. And so for us, that was really an important point. Take it a step further, we got our team, which focuses on all of music memorabilia, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, to sort of see what the history of this region was, and all of a sudden, we started seeing all these historical artists and modern artists, all from this region, being influenced by the heritage of this area. So for us, those were immense factors in things that helped drive us, and more than anything else, we're storytellers, right? We think entertainment is a way to tell stories, right? Music is, as our chairman likes to put it, it's the one common language that all people can really understand and get behind. And for us, when we saw that we could potentially have a venue in the birthplace of country music, it was something that we knew we had to focus on. Take that one step further, we went and looked for local partners. It's something that we always like to do whenever we enter into a community, because we don't like to come in and implement a facility that is very generic, that has very specific standards. What we like to do is, we like to come in, bring our standards of excellence, but then take those standards, and then make sure it fits with that fabric of the community that we talked about before. We had the opportunity to meet with Mr. McLaughlin and his team, and Clyde Stacy, and we knew that they embodied the exact elements of what we wanted in a local partner. One, they had heritage and roots here. Two, they had proven over time that they had commitment to the community, that they were charitable in their nature, and there was one thing that above all else was important to us, and that was their honesty and integrity. And when we met with them, we could feel that, and we knew instantly that we could have a potential long-term partner here, that not only had our interests, but the interests of the community in mind. Just to take you guys a little bit through the company, I've talked about 263 venues in 76 countries, 6 billion in system-wide revenue, 50,000 employees, 35,000 live music events a year, 83,000 pieces of memorabilia. Those are all key statistics of where we came to today, but what's happened is, it's been a long run of growth since that 1971 period to get there. And there's been one key change that's happened over the course of time, and that was, Hard Rock went up for sale in 2007, and there was a small tribe in Florida, called the Seminole Tribe of Florida, that had basically created the first Native American gaming enterprise in the country. They were the ones that really created that. Started with small bingo, and eventually it grew to the point where they could create this facility in Tampa, and in Hollywood, Florida, between Miami and Fort Lauderdale, that would be worth branding a Hard Rock. Those two facilities were so successful, that when Hard Rock came up for sale, our chairman of Hard Rock International, Jim Allen, who was CEO of Seminole Gaming at the time, said, "We should really buy this company." In doing that, they were successful in buying the company for almost a billion dollars. They created an independent board of directors that manages completely separate from the tribe, and Jim Allen is that chairman. One of the things that was so important to him was that the tribe would guarantee the long-term success of the business, rather than just be some company that's focused on the quarterly profits of the enterprise, and that was above all else important. So when we heard that Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Stacy and their companies wanted to get behind a long-term commitment to the community, it was exactly what we wanted as a company and a partner, and it was exactly what we believed the city of Bristol would want in not only a partner, but also a venue for its community. So skipping ahead, credit ratings, these are really important. We know that for any institution, any town, any city, any state, any country, your financial capability is critical, and we're the very first gaming company in history to maintain investment-grade ratings from all three agencies, and we have one of the lowest leverage profiles of any gaming company in the entire industry. So when you look for a long-term partner, those fundamental core values have rung true to who we are as a company, and they are exhibited in our fiscal discipline. So going on to the fun stuff, guest satisfaction. This is really important for us, and it's one thing that I think you would want to know as a city, and when you vote on these things, I think it's important. We were the first company in the history of J.D. Power and Associates to qualify for this guest satisfaction award, and be rated number one in our first year ever in it. So one of the examples of where we are. One of the other things, and one of the biggest things that we think is important for this community, and as members of the city council, is the employment of your constituents. As you can see, we've grown steadily from one small place to the, you know, 263 venues we are today, but we've focused specifically on diversity. We focused on being an important employer for women, and just being a generally great employer. So our 50,000 employees vote, and Forbes does this annual review. We've not only now, I think it's been our fourth year in a row for best large employers, our second year in a row for best employers for women, and the first time ever they had this as a category, we were ranked the best employers for diversity, so certainly a testament to that. Now, there's this woman up there that you guys see with red hair. Her name is Rita Gilligan. She was employee number one at that Hard Rock Cafe in London, literally employee number one. Still to this day, she is part of our company, and rather than serving burgers in London, she actually goes around the world for us and does all of our grand openings, and is sort of a brand ambassador for the company. But if anything could be testament to employee retention and how much we care about our employees, it's making sure that people like that are there. And that's not an extremely high-paying job, to one of the questions we heard from the community before, but it's to the, you know, to one of our servers in the restaurants. So that employee focus still remains today, and it's an important part of who we are as a company. So going on, brand awareness. So one of the things that you guys want as a city, and we believe is one of the benefits that we can bring, is you want to be able to drive additional tourism. You're not just building a facility here that's going to focus on the local community. You want something that can really draw attention. That goes back to that idea of the story of Bristol being, you know, the home and birthplace of country music. Well, that's something that we want to tell around the world. And so when we look at our brand presence, everywhere that's represented up there in Fuchsia is actually where we have Hard Rock locations. When we talk about that, what does that mean? It means that on an annual basis, we do a survey, and they tell us how many people around the world have an awareness of Hard Rock as a brand, and we've been doing that for quite some time, and this last year, it was actually 84% of people around the world actually know who Hard Rock is. They might not have a great sense of it, but they know, Hard Rock, yeah, we've heard of them, they do cafes, they do casinos, they do hotels, that's an important thing. And when we think about branding, and we think about marketing, one of the things we're going to focus on for this destination, if we're successful in getting this through, is that we'll be able to promote Bristol around the world at all of our venues, and it's one of the hallmarks of the company, and it's unmatched in our industry. So it's an important part of who we are. So how does that sort of translate, just to give you guys a sense of what this means? First is celebrity, second is memorabilia, third is music, philanthropy, and media coverage. When we look at all of those core principles that we use to drive attention to the brand, it's one of the things that we track very closely, and that's media impressions. Last year, we did 203 billion media impressions unpaid, which resulted in about $4.8 billion worth in the equivalent of ad value. So when we think about that network, and we think about what another company would have to spend to drive the kind of marketing that you would want to basically promote this facility, you'd have to spend significant numbers to get there. One of the other things we like to look at is how our brand can impact a local community. One of the things is, we hired the innovation group, and we said, "Okay, if we put our brand on the door, what does that mean versus one of our competitors?" What they found, and we've actually proven this to be lower than anything we've ever actually experienced, is that adding the Hard Rock brand to a casino will have a 16% positive impact on revenues, just by adding the brand. Then you layer on all of our entertainment elements, our spas, our fitness centers, all that stuff, and it's even significantly more. Two of the other stats that I wanted to highlight, 57% of the respondents living between 101 and 150 miles said they would take a trip to a potential Hard Rock versus 37%. So as we go back to my comment before about driving additional traffic, not just from this community, but from the surrounding community, we have a history and track record and a brand study that shows that we will actually be able to get 20% more of that population to come here, because it's a Hard Rock rather than another casino brand. So both important statistics. So now, I know the council has had a chance to review some of our applications, and this did get out in our elements to the public. One of the things we wanted to be able to show was the 46 acres of development, and what you're seeing here is not just a casino. This is a casino. It's 50,000 square feet of my space. It's a 3,200 indoor-seat arena with capacity to do outdoor shows for 20,000. It's got 30,000 square feet plus of retail. It's got seven restaurants, four bars, and then on top of that, it has, of course, all the gaming amenities. It's got a hotel, an initial one, over 300 keys, but it will have pools, it'll have spas, it'll have fitness centers, and then, of course, it'll have a lot of our little live entertainment places throughout, to make sure that the energy in the facility stays lively and exciting. So I went through some of these. The good news is, the one thing that we did note, and one of the other extremely, you know, thoughtful things about our partners, was they had really spent a lot of time looking for the best locations. And one of the things that we saw was, they had secured what we believed was an amazing, almost turnkey facility for us to turn into a casino in the Bristol Mall. Now, a lot of, you know, cities throughout the country always have this constant turnover. New malls will open up, and they have these existing facilities that fall into disrepair. In this circumstance, we see this as the most amazing opportunity to convert an existing asset that you have in the community, and create something out of that, rather than building something brand new. And as we were touring around, we spent a little bit more time today, we focused on where the energy was going. And so we went to Pinnacle, and we looked at what was happening there, and we saw how you were bringing more and more traffic here to Bristol, and so we think that a facility such as this will not only accentuate that, but will actually significantly boost the volume of visitors you're actually bringing into the Bristol community. So we're really excited about what this will bring, and the good news is, it's not just a slots-in-the-box. Wanted to give you just a couple of quick overviews of what the project will look like. The first one was sort of a broad one, but, you know, one of the things we will do is focus on some of the exterior facades, to renovate those, to make them feel modern and exciting, but still pay heritage to the local community. The other thing is, and part of our proposal includes some local F&amp;B venues, we think it's important that not only we bring in really high-end and really sort of middle-tier restaurants, but we also be able to serve people throughout the entire economic spectrum. And one of the things that we really wanted to do was bring in the best local venues, and help them expand, and help them get even better opportunity to create things here, but make sure that we were true to the local fare that's important to the local residents. So that's another important thing. You'll see that with the barbecue venue that's highlighted in that picture. Here's another picture. As you guys know, we like guitars. You'll see it in some of our other facilities, but the portica share there, we do a lot of this whole-market branding, and we think it's important to create it. And one of the best things that I saw was going down State Street and seeing a guitar at the end of the street there, on the side, and in a lot of the city signs, so we think that, we think that our branding and that will actually work again with the fiber of the local community, so pretty excited about what that'll look like. One of the other things is live events. So we know that not only do you guys have the sort of rhythm and routes program, and you also have the Crooked Road Heritage route that comes through here. We want to make sure that these We want to make sure that these live events continue to be a hallmark of what we do as a company, but we think with the proximity to Nashville, we'll be able to route a lot of the, you know, artists that we book throughout the country through this location, and we think that's going to be an important driver for what we do. Now, we do that 35,000 live shows a year. Some of them are on the small side, some of them are on the really large side. And so Hard Rock Stadium has about 65,000 seats. This is an image of, this was actually the Hard Rock Calling in London, 80,000 people we had for that. But we know that with, you know, the Bristol Speedway and what you guys bring in there, I think is 160,000 people just for one race, we'd like to be able to convert that into not just a one-day or two-day event, but we'd like to extend those stays so that those people can not only come back for that, but they can actually come back for more. And I think when we were looking at the market itself, to be able to see that many people coming to Bristol was an important indicator to us that you guys were that destination, you were easy enough to get to, great access, and it was a welcoming community that would like those sorts of crowds. So we're excited to bring the live event. So with that, I wanted to show you one of the elements of this I had mentioned before. About 3,200 seats are going to be inside, and this only shows a portion of the lawn, but we're actually going to do it as a dual-sided stage if we're selected. And what that will allow us to do is not only do indoor venues during the sort of foul months of the year where the weather's not as nice, but when the weather's beautiful like it is today, we'll be able to go out and create 20,000-person venues out there. And now, given social distancing and everything like that, we could certainly spread it out, but what we believe is that this venue will actually transform that area and allow us to bring in these major events, which we've had a pretty good history of doing. So I thought with that, I would show one of our partnerships, and we, there's one thing about this that's important. One, it shows how we like to entertain. This is, I don't know how many people here saw the Super Bowl this year, but probably quite a few. If you guys saw, it was hosted at Hard Rock Stadium. I wanted to play just a quick video to talk about the partnership, talk about our commitment to the community, and we thought it was a good example to show not only how we do football and sporting events and how we participate in those, but also how we do large-scale music events. So with that, we cue it.
And now, the Miami Dolphins' newly renovated home has a new name. It's made official this afternoon.
Proud to announce today that our stadium here, after the $500 million renovation, thanks to Steve Ross's commitment, will be called Hard Rock Stadium. The Hard Rock brand's all about entertainment, and we could be more excited about the heart of the home.
Next time you go and see a Dolphins game, you'll be at Hard Rock Stadium.
Run!
To be a good brand, you gotta be around for your friends. So to be around Hard Rock, Miami Dolphins, and Miami boy, man, you're taking a moment in the right direction.
This is our new home, baby!
Touchdown! Ten, five, touchdown Miami!
Been all around the world, but I ain't gonna hide it, it's nothing like Miami.
Congratulations to South Florida, they were able to score a Super Bowl 54.
that we'll bring. So just a quick touch on the qualifications. So one of my roles at the company is supporting our chairman in our casino development efforts. So this past year, we completed about $3.5 billion with the casino development from ground-up greenfield builds like we did in Sacramento, we did an acquisition of a new property in Ohio, and we actually created two huge expansions of our facilities in Tampa and Hollywood, one of which was the Guitar Hotel. In addition to that, we've got another pipeline of about $2 billion, which we're pretty excited about. And for us, there's an internal dedicated team who lives and breathes creating these entertainment venues. And the good news is, and as you can see from some of these images, each one brings a different character. And for us, to be able to dedicate that team to bringing not only the facility, not only all that entertainment, but the significant jobs to this market, we think will be an important driver for us. So with that, I thought I'd just show you guys a quick video of our grand opening, once again, to just drive home the point about how we like to cultivate entertainment. And one of the things we like to do, instead of doing, we do a little bit of a guitar-based shoveling at the beginning, but when we open a facility, rather than doing a shoveling, we actually do a guitar smash. And so we thought we'd play you just a little video to talk about our grand opening at our Hollywood facility and go from there. Well, it stopped there, but basically it just goes on for a whole bunch of fireworks and the guitar lights up. But anyway, with that, I'll close. And I think from our perspective, the one thing I want to leave you with is, one, we're immensely committed to this. We're here because we're excited to be. We have a lot of choices to take our brand and our capital to different places around the world, but we feel that Bristol exemplifies what we believe in as a company, and we think that the heritage of this city, the people of this city, will embrace Hard Rock and will help us really uplift the company and will help us uplift the city. We think we'd be an amazing steward of your city name as we sort of take it around the world to help bring people here. And with that, I think, you know, the one thing that we're committed to is creating significant jobs. And as this advances, and as soon as this referendum would head forward, if we're selected as the city's proponent, know that we will begin immediately to start to bring jobs into the community, and that's an important part to us. And we're going to focus on training people in the community. We're going to have more than likely an office here to start bringing people in to allow them to understand what those opportunities are, and we're going to make sure that we have the town halls and all of the outreach that you guys would expect of a world-class brand so that you can have a facility that you'd be proud of, food and beverage that you would want, and an entertainment facility that you can really, you know, say that you were a part of helping to shape and bring forward to the community. So with that, I thank you, and we really appreciate your time.
I would like to, we're going to read the resolution here, but I would like to thank you for your presentation you put on and for what I assume is the first recorded incident of Snoop Dogg appearing on our projector screens in this chamber. So thank you for that. Reading of the resolution.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, naming Hard Rock International, The United Company, and Par Ventures as the preferred casino gaming operator and establishment. Whereas the City Council met on September 11th, 2018, to consider the revitalization of the former Bristol Mall location. Since its closure in August 2017, the city has lost more than $2.5 million annually in direct and indirect revenues from the Bristol Mall with no certain means of recovery or future use. Whereas the City Council unanimously approved 4-0 with one absent the September 11th, 2018 resolution supporting a resort and casino at the former Bristol Mall site. Whereas the General Assembly passed legislation allowing the citizens of Bristol to vote by referendum to approve a casino within the city limits of Bristol, and the governor has approved this legislation. Whereas the legislation requires localities to consider the following factors in selecting a preferred casino gaming operator. One, the potential benefit and prospective revenues of the proposed casino gaming establishment. Two, the total value of the proposed casino gaming establishment. Three, the proposed capital investment and the financial health of the proposer and any proposed development partners. Four, the experience of the proposer and any development partners in the operation of a casino gaming establishment. Five, security plans for the proposed casino gaming establishment. Six, the economic development value of the proposed casino gaming establishment and the potential for community reinvestment and redevelopment in an area in need of such. Seven, availability of city-owned assets and privately-owned assets such as real property, including where there is only one location practically available or land under a development agreement between a potential operator and the city incorporated in the proposal. Eight, the best financial interests of the city. And nine, the percent of ownership in the proposer by minority-owned businesses defined in Section 2.2 hyphen 1604. Whereas the city issued a request for information on April 17th, 2020, with a closed date of May 8th, 2020, requesting information from casino operators to determine which operator would be of the most benefit to the city. Whereas the city received one response to the request for information, the response was from Hard Rock International Incorporated, The United Company, and Par Ventures collectively. Whereas council and city staff have reviewed the proposal and have considered all of the factors required by the legislation. And whereas after considering all of the factors, city council and staff recommend Hard Rock International, The United Company, and Par Ventures to be the preferred gaming operator within the city limits of Bristol. And now therefore be it resolved that city council and staff approve Hard Rock International, The United Company, and Par Ventures to be the preferred casino gaming operator and gaming establishment within the jurisdictional bounds of the City of Bristol. Council therefore directs the city manager and attorney to comply with the legislation and regulations to report this finding to the Virginia Lottery Board for prequalification approval in order to comply with statutory authority and regulations to allow for a referendum on the matter on November 3rd, 2020.
Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action.
Mr. Mayor, it would be my great honor to make a motion that we, as a city council, accept and pass this resolution for Hard Rock International, United Company, and Par Ventures collectively to operate here in the City of Bristol. It's my opinion that this may be the most important motion and vote ever taken here in council chambers for what it could mean for the future of our city. I make that motion now.
Have your second.
All right. Motion with flourish by Mr. Farnham and second by Mr. Hartley. Council discussion.
Well, I just want to thank Sean, is that how you pronounce Sean, and the team, Martin, your team. Great presentation. If you're trying to convert me to a Miami Dolphin fan, you blew it, okay? Your podium presentation missed the mark completely, but great presentation. I think seriously, the community's looking for a world-class operation. They know a little bit about Hard Rock, they don't know probably enough. So, you know, it's not about what council votes really, this is going to be a referendum vote. And so I think it's really important that you over-communicate to the community on what this is really going to mean to the community. When you say casino, that's all they think about, you know, perceptions, you know, build on what casinos mean, and some aren't good perceptions. But you need to present what Hard Rock's going to look like. You know, pictures are a thousand words. I think this video went a long way of helping to understand. But to leverage the heritage, to leverage the country music venue, to have concerts, to take it a step further and have conventions and the Songwriters Guild show up and, you know, all that goes with Bristol becoming what I'll call Little Nashville, right? Where up-and-coming artists have a chance to be recognized through Hard Rock International's presence, that's a win-win for everybody. So, but people don't see that vision typically, right? They see all the things they've heard through the history of casinos. So you got to now start to build your case with the community, I think, just all the things you're going to do that they don't understand yet. Advertisements, radio spots, video spots, TV spots, community get-togethers so they can, you know, see mockups and, you know, kind of see and kind of live it in a virtual reality if you, you know, know what I'm talking about. So, because there's a lot in this community that haven't been to a casino, you know, they haven't been to Vegas or wherever to see some of these casinos. So they don't understand a lot about what goes on there. So I think that's important. I'll just say this in jest, but you could be one of the first Hard Rocks to show a banjo instead of a guitar. But I'll just leave that at that. I do say that, you know, the heritage, I was just curious, do you have, do you have memorabilia really to Tennessee Ernie Ford and the Carter family that, you know, kind of came from this area? Do you guys have some of that memorabilia?
Yeah, so we actually have studied down at Paulard, Virginia, for a regional base of artists. We have their.
Okay, that's great. So, you know, I don't want to overplay it from my perspective. I'm here to support you guys. I think government's role in enterprise is for us to say, what do you need from us? We need to be a partner. We want to help you and then get out of your way. You're a private business, private property, you purchased it, it's a private investment. As long as it's legal, right, and done properly, we shouldn't get in your way. So just know that's the spirit I come with. So you let us know if there's anything that we need to do differently because we don't want to make it harder, right, on you. But we do want it done first class, right? That's what we expect. And I know Martin knows my perspective on that, and I know this team of United does it first class. And so we're expecting first class because that's their heritage and that's what the legacy is they leave. So as long as that's done, I think the community will be, I think they'll be 100% behind you. I don't see, I don't really see any downside unless, you know, something out of our control, you know, goes away we don't understand. But I wish you all the luck. We're here to help with the referendum and any advertisement and to tell people the real story so they get the real facts. So again, thanks for coming, and I appreciate everything you said tonight.
I mean, I'll just add, I appreciate the presentation. I echo a lot of what Councilman Mupar said. I think for a lot of people seeing that vision, you know, when, as you read through the information it's providing us, you can see that this is a very well-thought-out plan of how you proceed forward. And I think, you know, getting beyond just what the casino is, and as you just talked about tonight, that it's really more, makes Bristol a destination in entertainment, and that builds on a lot of things that have been going on in this community for a long time. So I think it's just gives us a chance to amplify, build on what's already here and amplify that and to really make it good for everybody involved. So I appreciate the hard work and you coming tonight and sharing that with us, and I think it's, Councilman Mupar is right, now it's to tell that story to everyone in the community so that they understand it as well.
All right, I'll just say, thank you, thank you again to Mr. Cafferty for coming and giving us that presentation, and to Martin and Jason, obviously, for all your hard work. It's been a long, it's been a long road, and we've still got some road to go, and please convey to Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Stacy our appreciation to them for everything they've done, not just for this project but for our community in the long run. This is, as I've said, and as Councilman Mupar and the Vice Mayor have said, I've said, and as Councilman Mumpower and the Vice Mayor have said, a tremendous opportunity for the city. You know, it will change the face of our city, you know, going forward. But I believe firmly it will change it for the better. We have, we have a lot of opportunity here to create a lot of jobs, a lot of jobs that pay well. And it'll change, not only will it change, you know, our, our budget sheets at the end of the year, it's going to change the quality of life for a lot of people in the city, and not, not only in the city, but in this entire region. So this is a, this is a game changer. This is, this is a big, big deal for us. And I've been happy to support it. You know, we were all there back in August of 2018, when Mr. McLaughlin announced his plans originally. So, so it's been a long road to get here to this night. And as I said, it'll be a long road to November, but I am very excited to take that trip with you all. And personally, as a guitar player, it pained me to see those guitars crushed, but I understand the, it had to be done. So I'll forgive you for that. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah. I'm excited. This is something that this city greatly needs. And we could not have had two better investors step up for this, for a project such as this. It is going to be a game changer. It's going to change this whole entire region if it passes. I'm glad to see that it is going to be a referendum, because right out the gate, I said I was for this, but I did not want five people voting on this. This is a community thing. Because it will change the face of this region. But I'm excited. I've been to Vegas, and I've seen the Hard Rock. I actually stayed there. And I know that it is a good outfit. And this city is going to prosper in a way that we really can't imagine. Because we are a small community. We, our, our leadership here has never had big vision growth. This is such a game changer, that this city could double and triple in its size in a decade or two. And so it's up to the people. So it is your job to educate this community. Because like it was said tonight, there is a lot of people in this region that has never been to a casino like this. And they think the vast majority is all gambling and drinking and all kinds of negative stuff. They haven't seen the five-star restaurants, the entertainment that you just can't imagine. So it's your job to educate this community. But in doing so, I believe that this is going to pass. And I believe that this, this city is going to be phenomenal going forward. And I want to congratulate y'all, and congratulate these investors. This is a project where investors stepped up, asked for nothing. They're doing business the way business is supposed to be done.
Amen.
And I just want to thank everybody involved in their hard work. And now to bring this across the finish line, it's going to be education. Thank y'all.
All right, are there any, any further comments? All right. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, and thank you all again. Item three, Amendment to Emergency Ordinance 20-1, Staff Report.
Counsel, we have before you tonight a, the ordinance, the emergency ordinance that we passed back on March 30th due to the COVID-19 pandemic. What I'm asking for tonight is just a, a motion to re-adopt this emergency ordinance. What it would do is it allows us to meet virtually if necessary, by telephone, by video conference, any other sort of means as necessary during the course of this pandemic. I'm not anticipating needing to use it at any time during the next 60 days. But as we've all noticed over the past two days, we've had an increase of cases in Virginia by about eight and a half percent, a total of roughly 3,000 cases over the past two days. Now, we've been lucky here in southwest Virginia and northeast Tennessee in regards to this. It has not really hit us to the degree that it's hit other local, other areas of the state. But in the event that it gets to a situation where there's a further lockdown on the city or on the state, I think it's important that we have this resolution available and ready to go. It does not hamper anyone's ability to still attend any meetings or take part in any meetings, any sort of situation like that. It just gives us the opportunity, if necessary, that we can't meet in person, that we can continue to meet and conduct city business.
All right, thank you very much. No one signed up for public comment, so I will look for a motion and a second to take action.
I'd make, make a motion that we re-adopt Emergency Ordinance 20-1.
Second.
All right. Motion for the Vice Mayor, second for Mr. Farnham. Council discussion.
Well, I'm opposed to this. When this pandemic first started, we had to see exactly how detrimental it was going to be. And we've seen, hopefully, the worst of it, and indicators are that we have. I see no reason to extend anything of such nature. We need to start thinking about gearing up and opening this state and this region back up. And should we see a spike, a change, then we can regroup and talk about it again. But as it stands right now, I do not see the need for an extension.
I mean, I agree. I think early on, I was very cautious, but the more the data's flowed in, the more you can see what's happened. I don't, I don't think we're going in the right direction as a government advising communities of what to do, what not to do, and how to have public meetings. And we're basically starving the community of the ability to come into a public meeting. And this is their government, it's not our government. I mean, it's hard. A lot of people don't even have computers to get on, or emails to, you know, send in their response on things. And, you know, to me, we need to be opening up sooner rather than later, and I would, I prefer we go the other direction. So I think we just need to get back to normal faster. And, and then if things change down the road as we learn more, then we can, we can, you know, adjust. But, you know, to shut it down until the end of June, I don't, I think that's, that's way overkill. And when I say shut down, I mean, community involvement in our public meetings, which that's effectively what we're doing.
Could, could you speak to that, Mr. Eads? Because, I mean, it's my understanding that this ordinance has nothing to do with the amount of people in the room. It's more what the governor's, his standards for public gatherings and things of that nature.
I mean, this ordinance does not limit the number of people in a room. The only thing that, as Mr. Hartley's correct in stating, the limitation comes from the governor's office, the executive branch of governor, government. And what this ordinance does is it allows us to meet virtually or by telephone in the event we have to, whether that's by audio, telephone, video, or any other electronic mean, where a quorum can be, doesn't have to be physically present. We still have to give notice in advance of any electronic meeting. It doesn't change how we operate by any stretch of the imagination. What it does do is it allows us, in the event, well, let's just say tomorrow, the governor says everything is on a lockdown, and you cannot be in a place with more than five people. What this would do would allow us to continue our regular meeting on June 9th, but it would probably be do, done through Zoom. Mr. Mumpower mentioned today what a great tool Zoom has been, and that, you know, we could still conduct our meetings through Zoom. People could log on to it. We can do it through teleconference as well with Zoom. So, you know, I'm not doing this to limit people. I'm not asking to limit people. What I'm asking for is a tool in the tool belt to be able to use in the event we have to do it.
You know, I don't, I don't disagree with some of the sentiments that some of the other councilmen have said tonight about, you know, the need to have a plan to reopen and get ready to get things moving again, you know, where they should be. But, you know, a lot of that, we're at the mercy of, of, you know, the Executive Mansion in Richmond. So in a much smaller scope, this is just, you know, as you said, the ability for us to have meetings, you know, via Zoom, via conference call, you know, whatever, whatever it may be. It would have nothing to do with how many people can be in this room. So I don't, I don't see a problem with it. I know that some people get worried when you, when you have emergency ordinances and change rules during, during crises. But in this case, I believe it's something that's, that's necessary. So I don't see any, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, you know, we could, we could talk all night about the, the larger aspects of, you know, whether we should, you know, whether the governor should be doing what he's doing or whatever. But in this narrow situation, I think that this is, this is warranted. And it's, it's a good thing to have, as you said, to, just to have it there just in case you need it. Hopefully you won't need it, but maybe you will. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Counsel, before we move forward, I want to notify you, YouTube has cut off the live stream for us due to the music that was playing in the background, because evidently you got to have the rights to play the music. So at the moment, we're not live streaming. I'm sure Hard Rock's probably got those rights, but...
I assume they'll, they'll post, we'll post the video?
They'll post the video, yes.
Fix that, okay. Item four is update on Bristol Complete Count Committee, Staff Report.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the 2020 census and some of the adjustments that have been necessary due to COVID-19. You might remember about a year ago, we had someone from the census come and talk about the importance of the cen, of the census to the city. And so at council's direction, we formed a complete count committee in conjunction with Bristol, Tennessee. And the main purpose of that committee is to develop some strategies to promote census response in the city, in both Bristols. Some of the members of that committee are organizations like the United Way, the housing authorities, the library, local churches, the Chamber of Commerce. Currently, the national response rate is 60.1%. In both Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee, it's just slightly higher at 61.6%. Personally, I'd like to see us get a little bit ahead of Bristol, Tennessee, but it's not a competition. We did receive a small grant from the state to do some census outreach. Unfortunately, because of COVID-19, we've had to rework some of those ideas. So one of our current projects is we are distributing some little packets of art supplies to students to give them something to do this summer, and to ask them to think about counting and come up with something that they like to count. So these materials are going out through the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools meal distribution. Also, the communities in schools is doing a meal pickup point. They're actually located at each of our fire stations. The library will be distributing some of these. They are now doing some drive-through library services, if you haven't had the chance to take advantage. And also, the housing authority will be taking them directly to some families. A couple of the other activities, Mayor Osborne and Mayor Fire Robin did a video on Census Day that we put out on social media. They both also wrote an op-ed that was in the newspaper. And we're looking at some other media opportunities for the future. High school students also did some art projects back when we were still in school. And so we had some posters made with some of those. We'll be putting these up at some of those locations that people are still visiting in the city. And just a couple of other notes. The Census Bureau has been sort of tweaking their schedule. Normally, over the summer is when the census takers show up and do that in-home visit for people that haven't responded to the census yet. That's been pushed back to the fall. I believe it'll start in August. There are still some of those jobs available. They have flexible hours, they're part-time, and they pay about 14 bucks an hour. So if you hear of anyone that is looking, you can send them to this website. We were at a slight disadvantage because the Census Bureau decided to give a pay increase to Sullivan County, Tennessee census takers, and bumped them up to, I believe it was $19 an hour. So that made our, the jobs on our side of the line a little bit harder to fill. But overall, the final census count will be completed by April 30th of 2021. So that's about three months later than normal. And then they will submit redistricting counts to the states by July 31st of next year. The committee's still going to be working on these strategies to engage some of the hard-to-count populations, which is like children ages zero to five, because they haven't gotten into the school system yet, their parents may not be aware, also the homeless and senior citizens. So we appreciate your continued support and spreading the word about the importance of completing the census.
All righty, thank you very much. Being no further business, it looks like we stand adjourned.